Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. If you would please stand for the invocation. It will be given this morning by Reverend Eric Zubler from Christ Church Cathedral, our neighbor church. And Reverend Zubler, we are so pleased and happy to have you here this morning. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's an honor and privilege to...
And please remain standing following the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Oh Lord, our governor, bless the leaders of our land that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to other nations of the earth. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this county, give them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, especially Marcina Ludgood, Connie Hudson, and Randall Give them those spirits that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, especially those in this county of Mobile through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you again, Reverend. This morning, we are going to acknowledge and honor some of our retirees for the month of August. I think we have four listed here. Three are in attendance today. We have Robert Gamper, who has 16 years and five months of service as a deputy sheriff. We have, it's listed as James Burrow, but we all know him as Eddie, Eddie Burrow, who has 11 years and seven months as chief deputy with the sheriff's department. In total, Eddie has, I think, 49 years serving with the city and the county. Bijan Shirazi, who has 14 years and one month as an engineering tech four. And Robbie Dingman, who is affectionately known as Shorty by his own request, who has 31 years here, and he was with heating and AC mechanic two was his title. So if you, those of you here would please come down and join us. We have a certificate and a lapel pin for you. And I think that's like 77 years of service combined. Seems like every month we have so much experience walking out the door, but I guess that's the circle of life here. And we just want the opportunity to let you know how very much we appreciate you, your service to the citizens of Mobile County. And we have, if you, we have a certificate for each of you. And their certificate reads, upon your retirement, the Mobile County Commission presents this certificate and wishes to express its sincere thanks and gratitude for your 11 years and seven months of dedicated service. This is to Eddie Burrow. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And of course, that same sentiment is on each certificate. And we are so grateful. Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. You know, saying thank you in a certificate and a pin is, is just such a small token for, for all the time and effort and the years that you have given to the county. And, but it mean, it's, it's meaningful to us that you spent this time serving the citizens. And so we, you know, like I said, it's, it's just a small token, but we, we hope you all really enjoy and, and your retirement, you certainly do deserve it. Bijan Shirazi. You're very welcome. I think we're going to get a group picture. Cherie, do we have some speakers signed up today? I believe that we do.
We do. We have three speakers signed up today, all in relation to the Top Golf agenda item. And the first is Mr. Tom Waldo.
Todd, is it, I think, is it Todd Waldo?
Todd Waldo. Todd.
Mr. Waldo, welcome. Please join us this morning. We're excited to have you here.
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, if you would just give us your name and, and address, please.
Sure. Todd Waldo, Top Golf, 8750 North Central Expressway, Dallas, Texas. Well, we're extremely excited to be here today, and we're hopeful for your support. Today marks a significant first step in bringing Top Golf to the community of Mobile. So we're hopeful for your support today, but wanted to give just a brief overview. I know there's been a lot of questions and a lot of excitement about, about Top Golf, and we certainly are happy to be in front of you today to share that news. But Top Golf is extremely excited to join its development partner, Realty Link, to deliver a transformative development to the city of Mobile. Anchored by Top Golf, the 13-acre overall project located near the intersection of I-65 and Government Boulevard will provide a world-class entertainment venue to residents and visitors alike to complement and support the greater Mobile community. Top Golf will serve as a regional entertainment destination. It also signifies a significant multimillion-dollar investment in the community of Mobile, and this project will strengthen the tax base and create jobs in a property that has essentially been vacant for a number of years. The Top Golf that we're proposing here is a, one of the first-of-its-kind new venue. Some of the highlights of that include, that is a two-story building, 60-hitting bays. It's a very family-friendly, community-focused venue. It will include Top Tracer technology, which is our latest and greatest ball-tracking technology seen on the PGA Tour. It will also include mini golf and an outdoor patio. This is, again, we've been looking in the Mobile market for a number of years. This is very significant to our growth strategy, and we're very hopeful for your support today. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but again, we are thankful to be here and hopeful for your support.
Question?
I think, I think there were some questions. If you guys want to go ahead. I, if you don't mind, Todd, would you, we've met before and you had a conversation, and I would like to just put this out. Would you talk about the programs that you guys have that you utilize at your facility with local high schools and high school golf teams?
Sure.
That's important to me, if you would explain that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Well, community engagement and services at the core of our business, both at corporate level and at the venue level. Top Golf is a good corporate citizen and engaged community partner. What you were referring to was the Youth Play at Ford Initiative. That is a program that offers free game play to those that mentor the youth, whether it's high school or Boys and Girls Club, things of that sort, offer free game play at our venue during the weekdays, during specific hours. And that's, again, the initiative to grow the game of golf and, and allow folks that have not been exposed to the game can introduce to it and, and take it on as a, as a hobby as well. But it's been extremely successful since we launched that program probably about five or six years ago all across the country, and it serves as a bedrock of the community.
Mr. Ludgood, I know you've had some questions about employment and wages.
Yeah. How many jobs will be created and what will be the average wage, hourly wage?
We're, we're estimating that we'll create a minimum of 150 new jobs. That's all net new jobs in the community, all competitive wages. We offer full-time benefits for anybody that works over 30 hours a week. A lot of different ranges of salaries. We have some full-time, some part-time. I don't have the hourly wage range for you today, but it's a competitive range, wage within the market. We've got about 40 to 60 full-time salary staff as part of the venue, and then also a lot of part-time staff as well. That would be great opportunity, employment opportunity for college students and others alike.
Mr. Waldo, I have visited the Top Golf facility in Baton Rouge this past weekend. I was, I had never been to one before, and I was curious about what it all, what was involved with it before we met today, and just wanted that background. And it seemed, it was a weekend, of course, but it was certainly full of people. And the management there, Brandon, I think his name is, told me that, that typically, at least on the weekends, there's two-to-three-hour waits if you don't have reservations.
It's, it's become quite a popular destination for a lot of folks, and yes, that's not uncommon for you to be a significant wait on the weekends if you have a reservation system that helps streamline that process and other offerings that, with a full-service restaurant and bar that makes that wait a little bit more palatable for our guests as well. But glad you had a good time there. Yeah, it's a full-service restaurant and bar with 60-hitting bays really gets you immersed in the Top Golf experience, and all the technology at the Baton Rouge venue will be at the Mobile venue as well. Excited, it's the third venue that we'll bring to the state of Alabama, the first, obviously, in South Alabama. It really creates a lot of opportunity for not only economic development, but to create a regional destination for, for the community.
Well, it seemed to be operating very successfully at the time I saw it, certainly. And now, my understanding is that ours will be just slightly smaller than, I think they have just a few more bays, but the layout, design, and everything will be very similar. I'm assuming they're, it's a similar design regardless of where they're located.
Yes, ma'am. This is a brand-new prototype. It's been under research and development for a number of years. We've got a couple of these that are currently under construction. None of it, none of these venues are open as of yet, so this is, you know, breaking, you know, breaking new with a, with a new, new prototype, and, you know, we're excited about it and think that the Mobile community is well-suited for it.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. We are excited about this venture, this investment partnership, and we certainly wish you continued success.
Well, thank you.
I know that John Whitson, I think, is here. And I'm, I'm not sure if you have other representatives with your, with the organization here or not. If you'd like to introduce anybody, you're certainly welcome to. And I know we have David Rogers here today as well, from our Chamber of Commerce, who I think has signed up to speak.
I will make some brief introductions, and those folks can stand.
Certainly.
They are in, in attendance here, but we have John Trinsky, who's a real estate manager with Top Golf. He's here with us today. And then we have John Whitson, who I think you all met last week. He is with the developer, Realty Link. So we're all excited, again, to be here today, and this is a, marks a significant milestone, again, in bringing Top Golf to the community. So, again, hopeful for your support.
Very good. Thank you very much.
So that Jay doesn't get his feelings hurt, Alvin is here, too.
I didn't see Alvin. Oh, there he is.
You know how you, you attorneys are very sensitive, so I want to make sure we recognize you.
He's our, he's our local representative, our liaison with Top Golf. Okay. Cherie, who's next?
Our next speaker is Mr. John Whitson with Realty Link.
Any further questions? Okay, we're good.
Our final speaker is David Rogers with the Chamber of Commerce.
And I know he's got some facts and figures, which is how we rely, who we rely on to help make these decisions of investments, is our chamber.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. My name is David Rogers. Address is 15 Sims Avenue, Mobile, Alabama 3604. Also have the privilege of serving as your economic developer at the Chamber and leading that organ, leading that team and the organization on the economic development front. And we've had the privilege of working with John and their team at Top Golf for some time now, for the last at least 24 months, as we've been looking at this project in different iterations, and have finally been able to kind of come to what we feel like is the best opportunity for our community today. What I do want to kind of go over with you guys is, is the economic development side of this. You've heard many different aspects of this project regarding the quality of life and having an asset in this community for talent attraction, having something that, that gets people excited to go and do something after hours, also the corporate side of things, the corporate events that can be happening here as well. So we're excited about that piece. But I would tell you, we, we look at this on a number of different, different angles. On the numbers side of things for you guys, we see this as an overall economic benefit of nearly $20 million over the next 20 years. To put that in perspective, what we're asking you to take up today on your incentive for this company is a payback period of only 2.3 years, a 40% rate of return on this investment, which we feel is extremely beneficial back to this community. Now, our analysis takes into account new, new sales tax revenue, new property tax revenue that'll be coming in, based off the real property and the furniture, fixtures, and equipment that'll be coming in there, along with the jobs that are generated and that economic benefit of those folks paying that money back into the economy. You know, we've heard this, you know, in a number of different iterations, but make no mistake, this is getting new revenue back into this economy. We were competing on this project. We were competing with ultimately three different states potentially, with the Florida Panhandle, the Mississippi Gulf Coast. We pull people in daily from those economies coming into Mobile. So when we look at what, what it's really competing against, it's competing against things like the casinos on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, things like the Blue Wahoos in Pensacola, right? So this is new money, new revenue generated back into our economy. We talked about the quality of life. I think the last thing to kind of hit on for you guys is the diversification. We're big on diversifying the economy and tourism and hospitality. This is a way to diversify that sector for us and, and Mobile and the economic benefit for that. I want to commend all of you for your leadership in taking this up and, and having a number of meetings with us as we've looked at this. I commend your staffs, specifically Jay Ross. I know that's really helped us out tremendously on some things, especially in some tight timelines that we had to get some things turned around. So I want to thank all you guys and happy to any, any other questions, but the, we, we do feel very strongly that the economic benefit back from this project far exceeds what is being asked of you today to be considered on the incentive side of things. Questions I can answer for you guys? Okay, thank you.
I'm just excited about the synergy it will help create with the county sportsplex, which is in very close proximity. I think that that will certainly be a win-win situation for both.
Absolutely. And certainly taking, taking a, arguably a blighted piece of property that has not been generating any tax revenue back to this economy and putting that, that property back in service is a huge part of what's going on here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any?
No more, no more people. No one else has signed up to speak.
Okay. All right. Glenn, I will turn it over to you. We'll start through the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Number one, approve the minutes of the special meeting, August 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, approve the list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
This public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is now closed.
Number four, approve an application for transfer of retail, retail beer, retail table wine, alcohol license submitted by Cute Mark LLC for Wilmer Cute Mark.
So moved.
Second.
Number five, approve sponsorship agreement with African Town Community Teach and Outreach in the amount of $1,000 from District One funds to be used for its annual community day event.
So moved.
Second.
Number six, approve appropriation contract with the city of Citronell in the amount of $7,500 from District One funds to be used for Bulletproof Fest or Citronell Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Number seven, approve sponsorship agreement with McKinney Place Inc. in a total amount of $2,500 to be divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Number eight, approve sponsorship agreement with Miss Mobile Bay Organization in the amount of $1,000 from District Two funds for its Miss Mobile Bay Organization competition.
So moved.
Second.
Number nine, approve sponsorship agreement with Providence Foundation in the amount of $1,200 from District Two funds for its annual charity golf classic.
So moved.
Second.
Number 10, approve request for authorization to reject all bids and advertise to rebid A-4 renovations and IT training room revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Number 11, approve request for authorization to reject all bids and advertise to rebid Sims Community Center Park shade structures.
So moved.
Second.
Number 12, adopt a resolution approving holiday schedule for fiscal year 2022 through 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Number 13, approve franchise agreement with MediaCom Southeast LLC granting a non-exclusive franchise for the construction and operation of a cable system for a 10-year term for a fee 5% of annual gross revenues.
Question on that one. I know there was some discussion about conversations with MediaCom and the other providers about expanding into the rural areas of the county. Where, where is this expansion? Because I, I get a lot of constituent calls about the need for service in some of those outlying areas. This is, I know Darren's not here, so... Is there anyone that can answer that? And is, is a 10-year term standard?
It is.
Do you know?
It is.
It is standard?
It is.
I was just curious if, I did have a conversation with Darren at one point in time, and he was going to talk to the, these companies about where they intended to expand and would they consider at least a, a short or long-term plan to look at expanding out in the rural areas. I know it's a business decision, but I'd like to be able to tell my constituents that, let them know whether this is something that could be expected.
They requested, and we gave them letters of support for them to get state funding to do that, so hopefully...
Right. I just wondered where, where that stood, you know, if, anyway, if you could check into that and find out, I mean, we'd certainly support this, but just want to keep that conversation on the front burner, if we can. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Number 14 was voted at the conference. Number 15, approve contract with TDA Consulting, Inc. to provide technical assistance for the home ARP program for a cost of up to $160,000. This contract will be for an eight-year term commencing on September 1st, 2022, and shall expire on August 31st, 2030. This contract term coincides with the period of performance for the home ARP grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Number 16, approve assignment to Adam Stewart Architects LLC for Government Plaza bi-fold doors replacement. Work will consist of the design, build, bidding, and project administration associated with replacement of both secure and maintenance parking garage bi-fold doors. Repose fee is $10,500.
So moved.
Second.
Number 17, approve request for authorization to advertise for bids for revenue commission teller window.
So moved.
Second.
Number 18, approve request for authorization to advertise for bids to Mobile Metro Jail Smoke Purge Ventilation System upgrade.
So moved.
Second.
Number 19, authorize extension of Alabama Recycling Fund Grant Agreement Number from the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for the funding of a glass pulverizer for the Mobile County Recycle Center for an amount not to exceed, and that amount is $197,624.
$197,000?
There's been a correction to that. I don't know which agenda that you have, Commissioner. That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Your motion?
Um, what did you, Glenn, you said there was an add-on to correct the amount?
Uh, yes, sir.
Me either. So moved.
Second. I thought that was rather on the economical end for that. Okay.
Number 20, approve contract amendment number five to the Mobile County Park Initiative with Weathermark Design Group LLC dated June 22nd, 2021, to add task nine, engineering, design, and C E and I services for Linksman Golf Course.
So moved.
Second.
Number 21, approve the three-month extension of professional services contract with Thompson Stephen Ellisard, Ellisord for the provision of consulting services in all aspects of the operations of J., James T. Strickum Youth Center to include updating detention manual and training staff at the rate of $50 per hour, not to exceed $2,000 per month.
So moved.
Second.
Number 22, approve professional services agreement with Ice Miller for calculation of bond rebate reports. Total fees for this agreement is $14,500.
So moved.
Second.
23, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved.
Second.
24, approve renewal maintenance agreement with Beer Equipment Company in the amount of $2,580 for online service advisor five on all C N F, C C and E, beer, and Atachi machines for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
25, approve contract amendment number six to the Mobile County Park Initiative with the Mott McDonald Alabama LLC dated June 25th, 2021, to add task seven, additional services for bayfront park restoration and improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Number 26, approve G M S A 2021-01, purchase of 2.7 acres of real property located on north side of Moffett Road, Mobile County, Alabama for Escataba, Hollis Park, and campground from Lance Big Clean, and owner for the amount of $22,000 plus closing costs, and owners Joshua Hattaway, Brittany Lynn Hattaway, Cooper, and Paul Lambeth for the amount of $5,000 plus closing costs, and to authorize commission president to sign all documentation related to the transaction.
So moved.
Second.
Number 27, approve intergovernment agreement for development and expansion of the Mobile County Sportsplex with the city of Mobile to provide $5 million of the Mobile County Sportsplex, pending final legal review.
So moved.
Second. I just want to say thank you to the city of Mobile. We appreciate the support. This, it, it doesn't get it to the point of completion, but it certainly helps to move us along, and, and really begins a partnership that, that hopefully will grow from here. But anyway, I'm grateful to the city for being a partner.
Number 28, approve extension of current lease agreement for six months under the current purchasing cooperative Anea contract from Williams Scotsman, Inc., doing business as Will Scott for 148-by-10 Mobile Office at a cost of $11,879.45, and 140-by-12 toilet unit at the cost of $22,227.57 for the Cedar Point location funding, Gomasa 21-05.
Tina, are we, I believe that William Scotsman is building a permanent office facility, is that correct, for the Cedar Point location?
We're looking at purchasing replacement trailers. The delivery time is delayed, so we're asking to extend the lease until they can be delivered.
Is the, so this lease that we're doing here, is it with the same company who is doing the construction on the ones that we're considering purchasing?
We are looking at quotes from Will Scott, yes. Will Scott has a part of the purchasing cooperative, so we can procure through them without any further procurement action.
Is the delay on our end or their end on construction? I mean, if the delay's on their end, I don't, I'm trying to understand why we're going to continue to pay for lease when we had ordered buildings, I thought we had ordered buildings anyway, permanent structures to purchase, and if they're the delay, why are we continuing to pay a lease on?
We have not yet selected replacement nor ordered them, but the delivery time is six or eight months from now.
Okay.
A question. Does Cedar Point not have indoor restroom facilities?
Well, that's what these are. They're portable.
But I mean, they have portable, but they're not built into the building.
There's no buildings there. There were, there were trailers there similar to what we have, except they were in pretty bad shape when we purchased it, so they were part of the demolition when we tore those out, and the ones that are there now are the ones.
The one that crossed the street?
No, so Tina, you want to, you may?
The bait and tackle shop, there is a structure there.
There was a, well, it was a trailer. It was a trailer, and it was pulled out. It was part of, when we did the demolition across the street and at the pier, the bathroom facility and the bait and tackle shop and the little store, it was all in just such disrepair that we, that was just hauled, that was all demolished. Well, it was really towed off, I think. It was on wheels like a trailer. And so these, we lease. They're a lot nicer facility, office facility, and a restaurant facility that's there now.
Okay. I didn't know it was included all of that.
Yes. I guess no more questions.
So moved.
Second.
20, excuse me. 29, adopt a sole-source resolution approving purchase of additional learning and service credits with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for Esri Enterprise Advantage Program in the amount of $62,100 for the Geographic Information Sciences Department.
So moved.
Second.
Number 30, approve second amendment to the professional service agreement with Coleman Group doing business as Buryon for polling technicians for general elections to increase compensation for training hours and services on Election Day.
So moved.
Second.
31, approve appropriation contract with Dedicated Dennis, Inc. in the amount of $5,000 from District One funds for its annual fee dental day.
So moved.
Second.
Number 32, approve project development agreement amongst AL Mobile Stature LLC, the county of Mobile, Alabama, and the city of Mobile, Alabama, whereby the county and city will each contribute to $1,250,000 for development and construction of a Top Golf entertainment venue, which will be located near Interstate 65 and Government Street, and to authorize Commission President to sign all necessary documents associated with the project development agreement. The 772 public notice was advertised in Mobile Press Register on Sunday, August 14th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. No.
33, approve renewal support agreement with D L T Solutions LLC under current purchasing contract, PNEA, in amount of $17,760.73 for Sun Hardware for the period August 19th, 2022 through August 18th, 2023 for the Sheriff's Office.
So moved.
Second.
34, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Regional Senior Community Center Foundation, Inc. in amount of $13,477.80 from District Two funds to be used for landscape maintenance at the Connie Hudson Mobile Regional Senior Community Center project contingent upon paperwork and legal review.
So moved.
Second.
35, approve sponsorship agreement, Mobile United, Inc. in the amount of $250 from District One funds for its resource rodeo event.
So moved.
Second.
36, adopt a resolution authorizing the county commission to host a promotional event at Celebrate Mobile University of South Alabama Football Game to be held September 24th, 2022, and payment of expenses not to exceed $5,000.
So moved.
Second.
37, approve setting the following speed limits as listed below for roads, segment of roads, and subdivision streets.
So moved.
Second.
38, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds from the following property owners for the following projects.
So moved.
Second.
39, approve right-of-way deed and/or easement agreements for Track 11 in the amount of $250 and Track 12 in the amount of $250 for Holly Point Drive, South Sheffield Road, and Wilson Road Grade Drain Basin Page.
So moved.
Second.
Number 40, approve preliminary and final plat for re-subdivision of all lot Eliza Jordan Corner and preliminary and final plat for Greelot Oaks.
So moved.
Second.
41, approve annual contract renewal with Earl Dooley, Inc. for one-year subscription for the I-NET service for the period from September 1st, 2022 through September 31st, 2023 for the Engineering and Public Works Department in the amount of $1,200.
So moved.
Second.
Number 42, accept the Airport Improvement Program Grant Offer and Agreement for the Jeremiah A. Denton Airport authorized the designated official representative of the Mobile County Commission to execute the grant offer and acceptance. This agreement covers the 90% federal funds reimbursement for the costs related to the design to improve safety area for runway 12/30 for the airport with a maximum obligation of $201,288.
So moved.
Second.
43, accept a drainage easement between Aguihie Road and Alabama State Highway 188. This 20-foot drainage easement is adjacent to and allow easier access to a 30-foot drainage easement that Mobile County currently maintains.
Who are we accepting that from?
Blossman Gas.
So moved.
Second.
Number 44, add-on number one, Engineering, accept the grant agreement for the Jeremiah A. Denton Airport pursuant to the grant application dated April 21st, 2022, and authorize the President of Mobile County Commission to execute the grant agreement. The 5% funding by the state of Alabama Department of Transportation for this grant should not exceed $11,182. The agreement covers the state reimbursement for the design of improved safety area.
So moved.
Second.
Number 45, add-on number two, Engineering, approve the Mobile County Fiscal Year 2023 County Transportation Plan in accord with the requirement of Act 2019-2 Rebuild Alabama Act.
So moved.
Second.
46, Commission Announcements and/or Comments.
Commissioner Ludgood? Commissioner Dooley?
Just one other thing. I want to thank you guys from Top Golf for being here. David, thank you. You're always the guy sitting in the corner getting the work done and never get much recognition around here, but thank you for all your work on this project and thank everyone for coming to Mobile and being here, and we look forward to supporting you guys and having you here in our community.
Second. Okay. Do we have anything else from the administration or engineering? Nothing? We've covered it all? Okay. We?
Number 47, approve request for motion to adjourn until September 12th, 2022.
And we do have an indigent care board meeting. Second.
Second.
Okay. This meeting of the Indigent Care Board is now called to order.
Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting of July 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Number two, accept report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance in the Indigent Care Fund at July 31st, 2022. Funds available, $179,394.19.
So moved.
Second.
Number three, approve correction in the July 25th, 2022 minutes. Agenda item number three, the items should have read as follows.
So moved.
Second.
And number four, approve request for motion to adjourn.